Live from El Paso County, Texas. The Veterans Capitol of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacon Commissioners Courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse. You are watching the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, October 16, 2025. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters James Garcia and Dario Garcia. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Judge, would you like to make some opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, just want to welcome you. As you know, this particular sessions, we like because we could take a little bit of time in each one of the topics. It's very special. So just wishing you a good meeting, very productive, and headed to the weekend. And if I don't see you, have a great weekend. Thank you.
Item number three is public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up for a public comment. We will take no action for item three. Item four, regular agenda 4A pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 115.021. Audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct the payment of those accounts.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Amos, First Assistant County Auditor. Again, it's just a housekeeping item for us to get bills paid. So if you don't have any questions, I would ask for you to approve.
I have a motion by Judge Sanmaniego to approve, second by Commissioner Olgin. The voting is open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
If you can verbally display the results, we have some technical issues, please.
Commissioner Butler, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
A motion carries. Item 4B, receive and discuss a presentation and update from the Bond Performance Team regarding the voter-approved bond projects and the capital improvement plan.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. While we're pulling up the presentation, this is our monthly update on our capital improvement bond projects. Before we start, I do just want to mention just how proud I am of the team that is working on this. We meet every other week together collectively. It includes all of the Public Works Project Management Leadership Team, Purchasing, Auditors, Legal, Budget, Communications, Operations, County Administration. And when we've identified problems or struggles, any challenges, we're working collectively together. I think I just can't emphasize enough, it's the best, highest performance of a team I've seen at the county. Everyone is so committed to seeing these projects be completed timely and on budget. And it's remarkable. And I also really want to thank Norma Rivera Palacios for her commitment to this work and the leadership she's provided in the Public Works Team to move these projects forward. So thank you to the team, and then we'll go ahead and get started. Miguel, would you mind going to the next slide for me, please? Just a quick update from county admin in the monthly update. Our recruitment for strategic capital management vacancies are in various stages, except for I have offered one position to Christian Martinez, who is currently with Economic Development. He will be transitioning over to the chief aide position, helping with the accountability piece on the capital improvement projects. So he will be starting at the end of this month. We're really excited. And we have one other vacancy that we're working on and possibly looking at internally hiring. And again, as I mentioned, we're meeting regularly to ensure projects remain on track. And we've been working on, one of the things that we've been working on recently, and we're so thankful to have Carmen on board, is we've been working on the project budgets and how much we need to be putting and allocating into the line items. So that there's no delay for the Public Works Team in getting the purchasing process completed. And so even though not all of the funding is being drawn down, Auditors has been very gracious and helpful to help us go ahead and build the budgets completely. And we're tracking on the back end how much money we've actually spent and where we're going to need our next drawdowns. So that is the administrative and financial updates. And we can go to the next slide, please, and I will turn it over to Karen Davidson.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent. You've already had one groundbreaking on your bond, and that was the sports park lighting, but I am so excited, I can barely stand it. This first one is our very first construction manager at risk, RFP for the Office of Medical Examiners, and I'm going to declare victory. We have completed our entire procurement process, and we are in our final approvals for this. This was an amazingly well orchestrated C-MAR under Ms. Keller's direction. As a leader, this has come together beautifully. Public Works has done such a great job getting this one ready, although we had begun working on it prior to the bond, this one has been a lot of work, a lot of heavy lifting in our very first C-MAR. We have on track for you one of the best-in-breed construction contractors to be awarded, and a secret, it probably will be in December and not January. In addition to that, the county attorneys has done a fabulous job in putting together a contract, an AIA contract, that the construction community understood and took no exceptions. Has all the remedies this court needs and the community needs in that contract, that'll be awarded the same day the procurement is awarded. So that will move Public Works right into an NTP or a Notice to Proceed, so we can schedule another groundbreaking. I don't mean to take it all for an E, but that is, in my world, a touchdown. So we are super excited about that one. The second one is our Ascarity Park Administrative Building, which is tied to the development of a second new procurement instrument, which is our CSP. You all have heard about that. That's the bid that will be evaluated as well. So it's not lowest bid, but it has evaluation criterion in there. And county attorneys have worked diligently with us on this new instrument. The Ascarity Administrative Building, we hope to have on the streets in November. So anybody that competed with us in the C-MAR and is looking for a little bit smaller project, this would be perfect. There are two more big opportunities coming. So for the public that's listening, everybody that competed in the first C-MAR, you did a great job. Please come back to the table. We have the CSP coming out probably in November for the Ascarity Building, but we also have two more C-Mars coming. The Animal Shelter is right behind it. We hope to be out in January or February with that. And then the huge grand finale, which will be the Ascarity Park C-MAR, which should be early spring. So everybody that competed, please come back to the table. We have more coming out. After the first CSP for the Administrative Building for Ascarity Park, we have about 10 to 11 more projects coming out. So the competition's high, and everybody's doing an excellent job. So please come back and visit our website and see what you can compete in in the future. The next three parks, I need to tell you all, are delayed. And they're delayed for community meetings and final finishes decisions. So these three parks, we do have community meetings scheduled, but there's about a six-month delay, even though these are ahead of schedule. These community meetings and the final finishes need to be done before they get to procurement. I believe Public Works is doing a great job to schedule those out for the next ones that are coming, but these three parks, Risinger, Westway, and Aladoce, are delayed for the final finish decisions. I put November 2025, I think that's too optimistic. I think it'll probably be January. Based on getting those final decisions, we have to get those to our contractor, get those final quotes in, and go back through the process in order to get these awarded. So we will do everything we can once all those decisions are made. This is something that we want to not do in our future projects. We want to do those community meetings and those final decisions prior to procurement. But those will be coming up as a cooperative methodology as soon as we get those finishing decisions done. So I'm going to turn it over to Legal for their legal updates.
Karen, before you...
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to, you know, we met, and I wasn't aware of everything you and your team have to do with that kind of the bidding. And I hope the community also understands, you know, we're on track, but because of a lot of things that had to happen at procurement. And you explained some of the sort of the details of what has to happen, and I wish more people would understand everything that has to take place just to get to this point before we move forward. So I want to thank you and your team for everything that you do to keep things moving.
Thank you. It's really Public Works that do the heavy lifting, but if we got it lifted upright, we could get it procured right. So it takes all of us, really, to get it done, but thank you.
Thank you and your team, please. Thank you.
Ms. Erica Rosales?
Welcome, Erica.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Erica Rosales, Nick Aglioni, Assistant County Attorney. I'll just make a few extra comments to what Karen mentioned. So for the C-MAR, we agree that it's a big victory. We had a lot of really thoughtful questions from Purchasing and from Public Works, because if you recall, this is the best value method, which is new to the county. It's not the traditional method we use. So we had a lot of really good questions from them on how to be sure to follow the statute, right? How to make sure to meet the timeline to choose the top vendor negotiations, that kind of thing. So we have a really good FAQ that we built from that and that we're going to continue to use with the other C-MAR processes that we're using to follow that best value statute. A few of the things, the updates from the last time I presented before you, we had the San Felipe Architectural Services Design Contract approved by you all in late September. We had the Ascara de Park overall architectural services contract approved by you all in October. And then as far as the contracts that Karen mentioned, the co-ops, we expect for the legal review of that to go fairly quickly once that's ready, because with the cooperatives, we use fixed-price construction contracts, which are pretty straightforward. We're very accustomed to using those. So those should be fairly quick on the legal side, once those are ready to go. A few more updates. Coyote Park, I don't know if you all saw, but Thornillo ISD met a few weeks ago, and on their agenda, they had planned to approve the sublease with the county. And Thornillo ISD, if you all remember, this is the one that's owned by UT Lands. And so we had caught that there were red lines to that sublease that we still wanted to discuss. And so in the meeting, Thornillo ISD discussed that they were not quite ready to approve, and so we are in communications with the attorney to work through that, so that we can get a meeting of the minds and a final for them and for the court. And then the last thing I'll mention is, as Karen mentioned, again, we continue working through competitive sealed proposal bid packet with Ascara de Park. That's a big deal, because in addition to Ascara de Park, we want to continue using that as a tool for the county, and so we're really excited to also have that. I'll turn it over to Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Lydia ideas with Public Works. The first project, as Legal mentioned, we do have that contract in place. We are already looking at scheduling some of those preliminary meetings. We are in contact with your office commissioner to get your office involved once the workshops come in. We're doing some kickoff meetings, so we'll definitely keep in touch. I know they provided some of your availability for the next few months, so that's very helpful in our scheduling for the upcoming meetings. We'll also work with Communications to make sure that the community is aware of all of the workshops and all of the meetings that will be taking place, because we will have several meetings covering different topics of the project. So the next step would be to set up those dates for all the workshops and community meetings. For San Felipe Park, we do have that contract in place. We will be releasing that NTP, the Notice to Proceed, this week. I do want to thank Karen's group, because I did get a PO for this in a record time. So thank you, Karen and her team, for definitely helping out Public Works on this one. I do anticipate that we will have a date set for the next public meeting, for the public meetings for this. So I know that we have some public meetings coming up next week, and I hope to announce the one for San Felipe at some of those community meetings, so the public's aware of those. For Gallegos Park, we are still, we still have the proposal under review, and we are starting to work on the contract for that one. We do have EP Water in place. They're waiting for us to have a little bit more concrete design, so they can do a final approval and an agreement for the easement. And then we'll continue to coordinate with IBWC on that.
And this is where we're going across the...
This is the crossing, correct. And then for Gallegos, we do have that proposal under review, and it's, we do have the ongoing land conveyance coordination, and we're working on starting that design contract. For Coyote Park, I think Legal covered what's going on on that. We do have a proposal that's still being reviewed, so we are still working with the consultant on that. So we hope that once we get the legal in place, the conveyance in place, we can move forward also with the design contract. For Ruben Estrella, we do have, we have been working, we have the final proposal. We are still working with the consultant. The consultant is working through the contract, and we're hoping to get that back from them very soon.
I have a question on Ruben Estrella. That's okay. So I continue to get requests from constituents who use the park about lighting there. I wanted to ask if there's any possibility of, you know, advancing at least the lighting, or some lighting in this park, so that constituents don't have to wait another four years to have lighting there?
We can definitely look into that. I know that when we were having discussions with the consultant, I did make them aware that the lighting would have to be a priority. We might, and we were exploring the idea of maybe doing a co-op on just the lighting and possibly leaving the rest of the items. The only issue with the lighting is obviously the infrastructure that has to go in place. We have to trench, so we don't want to do double the work if we put lighting where maybe we shouldn't, you know, have underground electric. So we can definitely continue to explore that.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure everybody understands, this is a very, like, used, well-used park. It's the only county park in precinct one, especially now that the sun goes down earlier. You know, people aren't able to use it at night. There's just not enough lighting. So if there's any way we could explore options for that, I would really appreciate it.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Norma Rivera Palacios. Last year, we added additional lighting, and what I will do is I will make sure that we are out there and see what is happening, because I understood that by adding, I believe we added like four additional lights. So we want to make sure the wattage is correct, the lights are coming on, and I will make sure we check on that, because I think you should have appropriate lighting, not as much as we are anticipating getting with a new project. But my understanding was that was better. We will check to see what we can do in the meantime. We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On our next project, Veterans Park, we are continuing to have discussions with the Fabin's Water District. We did have a meeting scheduled, but I believe it got rescheduled to this afternoon. So that's where we are, and we are pending their final location for their future well site, so we can add that to our agreement, finalize our agreement, send it for their review and for their board to approve.
The next three parks, which are all Sparks related, are a little bit of a tag team. I'm assisting Lydia and just kicking off some of these items. So we're looking at here is Sparks Mission, Sparks Walking Trail to Mission Ridge. We also have the Sparks Park Improvements, and then the Sparks Trail, which is an interior walking trail within the park. So we're going to talk about these in almost a lump fashion. I'm assisting Lydia and just getting the proposal ready by the designer. So we're bringing in our A&E Architect Engineer firm to come in and do a proposal. They're going to combine all these three projects into one project, giving us the ultimate project in one. So ultimately, we'll get the walking trail designed and coordinated correctly with the park itself. There is a side project, which we're working with Ferny, so this is really a trio. You're getting very lucky today. I'm just kidding. So looking at the Sparks Park, Ferny's helping us get quotes to get the trailers moved eventually coordinated with Region 19 and making sure that works well. We have some quotes received, so we're kind of ballparking those figures, and now we're looking at what's pending to get that item and that number over to Region 19 for further discussion. As far as the rest of the park, like I mentioned, the design proposal has been submitted. It's currently being reviewed, and so hopefully, we will have our comments back and forth a little bit with the consultant, but we should have it by the end of November back in your hands for you to approve the consultant's contract to move forward with design. Moving on to Westway. Westway is also another little lump sum project. We combined both Westway projects into one, and then we split them into two. So this is kind of referencing back to what Karen had mentioned, a little bit of a delay, but we also have some advancement. So with Westway, me and Lydia are working on this site specifically. Lydia will be taking forward these items that are shelter. We keep talking about the shelter bundles, and those are all the amenities that come with the shelters, so tables, barbecue grills, any trash cans, all that. So that's all discussions that we'll be working with the community and getting input. Moving a little faster, are components that don't have as much flexibility. So we do have a few items already quoted, ready to go with a contractor. So you'll be seeing that in November, assuming we get the contract submitted with Purchasing, I mean with county attorneys, and everything goes quickly with that. It is a fixed price, the item we are submitting in November, it will be a fixed price contract. So as Erica had mentioned, that's probably a little more streamlined and a little more typical for them in that park. Do you want to talk about the shelters?
the workshops come in. We're doing some kickoff meetings, so we'll definitely keep in touch. I know they provided some of your availability for the next few months, so that's very helpful in our scheduling for the upcoming meetings. We'll also work with Communications to make sure that the community is aware of all of the workshops and all of the meetings that will be taking place because we will have several meetings covering different topics of, of the project. So the next step would be to set up those dates for all the workshops and community For San Felipe Park, we do have that contract in place. We will be releasing that NTP, the Notice to Proceed, this week. I do want to thank Karen's group because I did get a PO for this in a record time. So thank you, Karen and her team, for definitely helping out Public Works on this one. I do anticipate that we will have a date set for the next public meeting, for the public meetings for this. So I know that we have some public meetings coming up next week, and I hope to announce the one for San Felipe at some of those community meetings so they can, so the public's aware of those. For Gallegos Park, we are still, we still have the proposal under review, and we are starting to work on the contract for that one. We do have EP Water in place. They, they're waiting for us to have a little bit more concrete design so they can do a final approval and an agreement for the easement. And then we'll continue to coordinate with IBWC on that.
And this is where we're going across?
This is the crossing, correct. Mm-hmm. And then for Gallegos, we do have that proposal under review, and it's, we do have the ongoing land conveyance coordination, and we're working on starting that design contract. For Coyote Park, I think Legal covered what's going on on that. We do have a proposal that's still being reviewed, so we are still working with the consultant on that. So we hope that once we get the legal in place, the conveyance in place, we can move forward also with the design contract. For Ruben Estrella, we do have, we have been working, we have the final proposal. We are still working with the consultant. The consultant is, is working through the contract, and we're hoping to get that back from them very soon.
Hi. I have a question on Ruben Estrella. It's okay. So I continue to get requests from constituents who use the park about lighting there. I wanted to ask if there's any possibility of, you know, advancing at least the lighting, or some lighting in this park, so that constituents don't have to wait another four years to have lighting there?
We can definitely look into that. I know that when we were discuss, having discussions with the consultant, I did make them aware that the lighting would have to be a priority. We might, and we were exploring the idea of maybe doing a co-op on just the lighting and possibly leaving the rest of the items. The, the only issue with the lighting is obviously the infrastructure that has to go in place. We have to trench, so we don't want to do double the work if we put lighting where maybe we shouldn't, you know, have, have underground electric. So we can definitely continue to explore that.
Okay. I just, I want, I want to make sure everybody understands, this is a very, like, used, well-used park. It's the only county park and precinct one, especially now that the sun goes down earlier. You know, people aren't able to use it at night. There's just no, not enough lighting. So if there's any way we could explore options for that, I would really appreciate it.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Norma Rivera Palacios. Last year, we added additional lighting, and what I will do is I will make sure that we are out there and see what is happening because I understood that by adding, I believe we added like four additional lights. So we want to make sure the wattage is correct, the lights are coming on, and I will make sure we check on that because I think you should have appropriate lighting, not as much as we are anticipating getting with a new project, but my understanding was that was better. We will check to see what we can do in the meantime.
Yeah, please.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
On our next project, Veterans Park, we are continuing to have discussions with the Fabens Water District. We did have a meeting scheduled, but I believe it got rescheduled to this afternoon. So that's where we are, and that, we are pending their final location for their future well site, so we can add that to our agreement, finalize our agreement, send it for their review and for their board to approve.
The next three parks, which are all Sparks related, are a little bit of a tag team. I'm assisting Lydia and just kicking off some of these items. So we're looking at here is Sparks Mission, Sparks Walking Trail to Mission Ridge. We also have the Sparks Park Improvements, and then the Sparks Trail, which is an interior walking trail within the park. So we're going to talk about these in, in almost a lump fashion. I'm assisting Lydia and just getting the proposal ready by the designer. So we're bringing in a, our A and E Architect Engineer firm to come in and do a proposal. They're going to combine all these three projects into one project, giving us the ultimate project in one. So ultimately, we'll get the walking trail designed and coordinated correctly with the park itself. There is a side project, which we're working with Fernie, so this is really a trio. You're getting very lucky today. I'm just kidding. So looking at the Sparks Park, Fernie's helping us get quotes to get the trailers moved eventually coordinated with Region 19 and making sure that works well. We have some quotes received, so we're kind of ballparking those figures, and now we're looking at what's pending to get that item and that number over to Region 19 for further discussion. As far as the rest of the park, like I mentioned, the design proposal has been submitted. It's currently being reviewed, and so hopefully we, we will have our comments back and forth a little bit with the consultant, but we should have it by the end of November back in your hands for you to approve the consultant's contract to move forward with design. Moving on to West Way. West Way is also another little lump sum project. We combined both West Way projects into one, and then we split them into. So this is kind of referencing back to what Karen had mentioned, a little bit of a delay, but we also have some advancement. So with West Way, me and Lydia are working on these, this site specifically. Lydia will be taking forward these items that are shelter. We keep talking about the shelter bundles, and those are all the amenities that come with the shelters, so tables, barbecue grills, any trash cans, all that. So that's all discussions that we'll be working with the community and getting input. Moving a little faster are components that don't have as much flexibility. So we do have a few items already quoted, ready to go with a contractor. So you'll be seeing that in November, assuming we get the contracts submitted with purchasing and, I mean, with county attorneys and everything goes quickly with that. It is a fixed price, the item we are submitting in November, it will be a fixed price contract. So as Erica had mentioned, that's probably a little more streamlined and a little more typical for them in that park. Do you want to talk about the shelters?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit on the contracts. You will be seeing, it'll be two contracts for the three projects because we are combining, as Melina mentioned, all of the shelters, all the shelters and all the park amenities will be one contract. Everything else that's more civil work, like the trail, the lighting, that will be a different contract, but they will kick off at the, at the same time, so.
Yes, and we'll repeat this information again for the next two parks that it affects, or a couple parks, we should say. So that was the West Way project. Rising Gare is similar to West Way. We do have two tracks within it, so again, Lydia will be handling the shelter components and all its amenities, and I'll be dealing with everything else that's not as flexible. In this, in this case specifically, we're looking at the drinking fountain. And so, but we'll discuss that further at the community meeting. For this one is on October 21st. And then we have Agua Dulce. Agua Dulce is again following that same pattern. Agua Dulce has a community meeting scheduled for October 21st during the day. We worked well with the communications team with your commissioner, with your office, to get this meeting scheduled. So in that meeting, we'll again present the items similar as we discussed here. The items that are not as flexible, those will go quickly through the fixed price contract in the next coming weeks, and then the shelter bundles are going to be the fun plug and play component that Lydia's doing with the community. So we'll see both, a little bit of more rigidness and a lot of flexibility coming from both sides here. And that, any questions on those three parks? I know we talked about basically lumping and then splitting at the same time. We're good? Awesome. So sports park field lighting, as we saw the kickoff event occurred a couple weeks ago, during the, the very tiny off-season they had, they were able to complete the lighting or the electrical components for the park. So a lot of that major critical components from installation occurred. It was very successful. Currently, if you visit the site, it looks almost, you know, untouched, like there's no impact to the operation. Every day, the contractor goes and switches out the actual fixture now, now that all the electrical wiring has been upgraded. And so every day, he's up there, up there, or they're switching from the, the old headlight style to a more, the LED fixture. And so at the end of every day, they do their best to put that field back in unusable form. So they're working very closely with the park staff, obviously letting them know of any impacts in case there needs to be any adjustments, but no complaints yet, and we're moving along as scheduled. For the Park Administration Building, this is the one project that Karen was mentioning earlier. This is for the competitive sealed proposal that would be going out to bid hopefully in November. She did mention that that is a six-month process. We have worked diligently with the design team to get all the plans updated, finalized, so everything's good. It's been submitted. It's currently under their process of review, so we trust. We also worked really hard with the county attorney's office and purchasing as well to get not only the CSP package, which is all the front-end documents for procurement, completed, but also the contract, and all, all these components are within the, the package that will be in the advertisement for the bid. And so this, again, working with county attorneys and county purchasing, we are looking every, pretty good, and so I'm told November-ish, they'll let me know how we, how we're doing. Oh, wrong term. The last one for me is going to be the animal shelter. In September, we did awards design. We've scheduled the official workshop for county staff. So this will be an internal, internal workshop. It's almost a two-day process with the design team and their subconsultants, which are animal shelter specialists. We will, we will share the information for county staff that wants to participate or at least take a peek in and see how the process is going. It is a very lengthy process. Again, they're bringing in a consultant from out of town that specializes in animal shelters, but during this workshop, we're very, very excited because it's, you know, the dream, the pie in the sky, you know, that like just throw all the ideas out there, and then they start narrowing down and focusing on what's actually needed and required for this area. So we're very, very excited. We've compiled a great dream team. If anybody else needs to be on the dream team, let me know. But we are scheduling this workshop at the end of October with a few site visits scheduled here around that last week. Any questions?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Fernie on this with Infrastructure Services. And, and the last project that we have an update is the Office of the Medical Examiner. As both Karen and, I guess, Attorneys mentioned, we are in the process of closing up the, the CMR process. You'll be seeing the, the ward coming pretty soon. And then on the design end, we're, the, the architect is working diligently to trying to finalize our schematic and design development phase, and they're anxiously eager to start working with our selected vendor so we can start moving into these value engineering options that we do have as part of the medical examiner process. I'm not sure if you have any questions with regards to this project or any of the other projects we've, we've covered. And I think this concludes our, our presentation here.
Pretty impressive. Thank you so much. This is, as I've said before, a lot of eyes looking at us, and, and people are not, I'm not getting the type of, you know, like, where are you? I haven't seen anything, or that kind of thing. So we're getting the public to know that, and, and thank you so much for, for keeping everything on track. Are we up to date on signage, for example, at each one of the, the projects as to the project taking place, or anything to, to show that? Could you brief us on that a little bit?
Yes, we are. Communications has been working on the signage piece. Melissa, do you want to share that update?
Sure. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Melissa Carillo. So we definitely have worked with your offices and the Public Works Office on the final designs of those signs. They have been ordered. However, they have not yet been placed at the sites. We are working diligently. I know I speak with Norma often, who's like, we need to get this going, and so we're waiting on the delivery of those signs to come in so we can get them placed at the sites.
Oh, that'll be great.
Yes, sir.
That's so informative. Thank you. Well, great job.
I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, do you have an estimate, Melissa, when they might be arriving?
I, I do not. Let me follow up with my team so that I, I don't mislead the court and I can get you an exact date.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa.
I know that, just to update a little bit on that, I know we just confirmed the, the locations of every sign, so I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be very soon.
Great job. We thank you, Legal, Purchasing, everybody working together. Makes our life a lot easier that everything's going up to speed, so thank you so much for this teamwork. Thank you.
Judge, may I?
Yes, Commissioner.
You know, one of the things that, that I, I really think, and it's down the road, but I think we need to start preparing for this, how this is going to increase our maintenance and operations for all these projects because, as we know, our budget has, you know, been a challenge, and so I think we need to start preparing for that down the road, at least two, three years down the road. I know we're going to end up having to, to make sure that we provide for the proper maintenance. I mean, it's an investment, and we need to make, make sure we take care of them and provide the proper maintenance for them, so.
Yes, sir. That's a really good point, Commissioner. We are working on that information. We'll make a presentation to the court as we've compiled. We're looking at both the operational and the long-term maintenance for these improvements, and so we will be bringing back a presentation and information on that for the court.
Okay, thank you. Carmen, did you hear that? Thank you, Carmen. Thank you so much. This is very inspiring. Thank you. Appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Item 4C, discuss and provide additional direction to staff regarding Commissioners' Court Strategic Plan Goal Five, Cultivate Strategic Partnerships and Community Connections, Action Two, Strategic Planning Roundtable with Partners, Concept, Plan, Direction, and County Actions, and Action Nine, Regional Strategic Planning Efforts, Desired Outcomes, Method Approach, Direction, and Funding.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. While our team is making their way up here, I wanted to talk about these two items. It's one item, but there's two actions under your strategic plan, under your Goal Five. You, you identified two actions that you want to work for, work towards. One of them is a Strategic Planning Roundtable with Partners, Concept, Plan, Direction, and County Actions. And then Action Nine, which you'll see on the screen, 5.9, is a regional strategic planning effort. And we want, what we want to talk to you all about today is to get a little more input and just discussion about these two different events. So 5.2 is just talking about strategic plans, sharing strategic plans with other partners. 5.9 is more about a community broader discussion and planning with the community. And when I say community, I mean, I believe the court means with community partners. What are we working for? What are we working towards? What are some of our high, high goals that we're all in agreement on, that we want to collaborate and, and work toward? And then we each go back to our lanes on how do we move towards those goals? So the, the 5.9 would involve, I think, even more partners. It would be a much broader outreach and collaboration. But as we're working to move these forward, we wanted to have a little more discussion with the court and hear from you all on what are your, what is the desired outcomes of the two meetings, just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. And then who are you wanting to include in each of the two meetings? And, or the two, I don't want to call it a meeting because it may be, the second one especially, may be more than just a meeting to get to what we're talking about here. But what are some of the outcomes we want to see? Do we want, who do we want to ask to be the convener, or is it us that convenes these? So we just want to have discussions on each one of them. I do think it would be easier if we broke them down by goal or by action. If we talked about 5.2, the, the Strategic Planning Roundtable, to understand who all we want to meet with, and that's, and it's kind of a more micro-level strategic plan discussion, and then the bigger community brainstorm, where are we going together as a community, more of a comprehensive community plan? We, we would want to have your feedback on those and just thoughts before we continue to work moving that forward. So would the court be open to discussing 5.2 first, which I think is the one that we will be able to move probably more quickly on and more, it'll, I think, be, have a more concise outcome versus the 5.9, and then go to the 5.9?
Yep.
Okay?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, first of all, thanks, thank you for, for bringing this back so we can have this discussion. I think that, you know, these, these actions are, are things that I have heard in the community from many, many different areas and different, different stakeholders that, you know, need, need to take place, especially the, the second one, the larger one. And, you know, the reason I brought it up in strategic planning is I've had, I've had so many discussions over the years about, you know, what's the next step for El Paso as a community? You know, they did this back in the, the 90s when Ray Caballero and Senator Shapley and Senator Rodriguez got together and then convened the community to come up with, you know, some strategic goals to work towards, and one of those was, ended up being the Medical Center of the Americas and, and the, the medical school. I, I think the other had to do with Fort Bliss and, and maintaining, right, maintaining operations and, and missions here. And I think the third had to do with border, cross-border commerce, but 9/11 kind of threw a wrench in that motor, so, but I, I, I would like the community to come back together and, and do something like that again. I don't know if we really have a, a strategic plan as, as a community, kind of like that, moving forward, and so that's, that, those are just my comments on that, and we'll talk about, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But my thoughts on the first one are, you know, along the same lines, just, you know, we, we, we need to have a better idea of what, what other entities, especially like the city, even cross-border, like the city in Juarez, what their strategic plans are and how they can align with us. I've heard a lot of people, you know, talking about the fact that, that we kind of do things in a silo and, and we don't, we don't communicate enough. And so I would, I would say that, you know, definitely we need to work with the city to, to even school districts, you know? We, we've talked about in the past, you know, this project that some folks at EPISD are working on to make El Paso a, a child-friendly community, and just being able to understand what they're doing, and then of course, the smaller municipalities, right? I, I don't know if a lot of them actually do strategic planning or not, but maybe that's something that we can urge them to do if they, if they're not, so that they can also kind of align some of their, some, some of the things that we're working on and, and some of the things that they're working on, so that we can all kind of move forward in a, in a, in a, in a very intentional manner to, to keep communication and, and also understand what, what everybody's plans are.
Commissioner, I, Lorena and I attended a strategic planning session at Fort Bliss earlier this year, and it was a half-day kind of roundtable discussion type of event. And they had different, they had the county, well, I, I spoke on behalf of the county, but the city was also there. Other stakeholders were there to talk about their strategic plans, so I was able to, to update them on, on, on ours. And I think it was Mr., it was Leonard Wells, who actually did like a, he did like a, a really thorough analysis of all of the strategic plans that are published from small municipalities to the city, to the county. And it was a very high-level comparison overview, but he basically highlighted things that overlapped across all, all levels of government, and then, and, and just highlighted those as maybe areas to focus on. So I share that to say that strategic plans do exist, and, and that a lot of this analysis was done earlier this year, so, so maybe we can touch base with Mr. Wells, and, and, and he had a really good, I think, broad scope of stakeholders who were, who were invited and who participated in that. This was from the perspective of Fort Bliss, which I think is, is distinct and, and limited in a lot of ways. But I do think that as a county, it should be our role to, to bring everybody together on a regional level. I think we're best positioned to do that because, because we work with all of the municipalities and, and we represent unincorporated areas that don't have representation at, at other levels, and we have Fort Bliss, right? So I think, I think it would be really valuable and, and having, having that information from Mr. Wells might help, help at least get some background information. And I just wanted to mention one thing also that, that in the conversations that I've been having, is there's a lot of overlap in issues with, with us and Hudson County. And it might be unique to, you know, the Far East areas and the more unincorporated and rural areas of the county, but issues with power generation and water and warehousing and industry and data centers, transmission lines, those are all either issues we're dealing with now or will be in the very near future. And I think if we can work with maybe Hudson County and even Doña Ana County on those things, I think it would be valuable.
Judge? Commissioner?
You know, I, I think, I agree with, you know, the comments have been made. I think what we need to do, probably meet as, as a county and decide what are the, some of the short-term goals that we want to focus on, particularly issues like water with the municipalities, with the outlined areas of the county, our issues with respect to the hydrant problem that, you know, it's not just us, it's statewide. And maybe we should meet to identify what short-term things we want to focus on that we might be able to identify where there's funding for because we are going to be kind of short on what we do with these projects in terms of our funding. So, and, and so I think we should meet to identify first what short-term issues we want to deal with and, you know, start maybe having meetings with those. And then that the next level would be just a, you know, conglomerate of the entire community, what it is that the entire community wants to do in terms of. what it is that the entire community wants to do in terms of progressing and issues that we want to identify, uh, as a community and what we want to do. Uh, I think that's more of a macro level. But, um, but I think initially we ought to really meet and focus on some of the things that we might want to work with other partners, like, you know, I said, the MUDs in terms of those hydrant issues. Uh, we know the governor has made it a point and the legislature has dedicated $2 billion this session for, to redo, uh, water infrastructure throughout the state. So, maybe as a community, that may be one of those issues we might start hitting and how we can all plan if there's overlapping, um, you know, needs that we, that we should tackle with them, so.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. And I think it's also important that we include, um, some of the other entities besides municipalities. So, for example, our ESDs. Um, we hear from them basically once a year when it's time to review their budget. But aside from that, we don't really have regular, uh, communication as, as a court, as an entity with them. So, I think the ESDs are really important. You mentioned the MUDs. I think that's huge.
Well, and I, and I'm including the ESDs in that because that's really part of the water and the hydrant issue. They're a big part of that because...
The Lower Valley Water District, the Irrigation District. So, there's a lot of other entities that we really need to make sure we're having regular and constant communication with.
Uh, we, we also have a strategic, um, goal, um, or action on, on water specifically, right? That, that Munzer's, Munzer's heading up right now is trying to bring, um, like, uh, stakeholders and strategic planning together. I think water is the most important issue that we have. And, um, it could easily overtake a strategic planning, um, session alone.
That's one of the things I was gonna ask as the court started, as we start this discussion. Um, and I, I don't know if it's wise for our first time to have a very broad umbrella strategic plan discussion and then possibly identify breakout for follow-up? That we're gonna have a, some like smaller breakup, breakout, follow-up planning sessions? Or, or sharing sessions? Um, or is it smarter to start with the smaller and then do the broad? Um, I, whatever the court's pleasure, but if we start with everyone in the room and start identifying, you know, just, just even start with sharing, what are you working on? What is your goals? What are you planning for? That might help us identify who, you know, who to, how to break into smaller sessions, what to follow up on, what we might find out, something's already being tackled that we didn't know it was being tackled. Or we might find out something that no one's working on or really focusing on that is extremely critical. So, um, i- if, if we go with the large one, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a one-time. I mean, we can then, and maybe even certain agencies will want to take on the, like overseeing a certain topic to continue moving it.
Well, well, you know, one of the strongest, uh, partners that we have are the municipal mayors. And, uh, I've been, I guess I'm on my fifth year now of getting them together. Uh, but yesterday was so, um, like it culminated to what I always wanted it to be. Uh, we had every mayor, uh, except for Mayor Johnson, he was traveling. But I had the mayor of Las Cruces, uh, the mayor of Sunland, the mayor of Anthony. So, I didn't just keep it to, to our area. And then every one of them spoke about some of their needs. And then we realized that if each one said, "This is where I need help." For example, Sanelli, uh, Mayor Chacon has a really, you know, he's working really hard on, uh, Sanelli proud. And he wants for every other mayor to recognize that the seat of the county was Sanelli. And he says, "But I need all the other mayors to, to acknowledge that, that we should be proud, whether you're Verizon, whether it started in San Elisadio." And then each one, um, uh, Mayor Cruz talked about the integration of, you know, the, the Native Americans and, uh, indigenous and, and incorporate that. So, he said, "I need help where it's not just something we're trying to accomplish, but that every one of us supports that." And, and so we, we sort of went through that and we realized that if each mayor, uh, sort of says, "This is what I need, how can you help me?" But then we turned it around to the other side and, um, Commissioner Codonado spoke about the Promise Program. And I said, "Well, why don't each one of you incorporate the Promise Program in each one of your municipalities?" And so, it, it, that, we hadn't, it's been five years and it had not come to culminate to that point where, where they saw each other as, as, uh, you know, an opportunity for them. And then, uh, we talked about aerospace and what does that aerospace mean to each one of them? Because sometimes we talk about aerospace as if it, if it's isolated from, from, you know, Mayor Cruz or Mayor Chacon or Mayor Renteria. And so, how do we, and so you, like you said earlier, we could, we could piggyback on that because it's an audience that, like, because it's taken a long time to get to that kind of level of insight. I mean, I was very impressed how each one of them got up and, and said, "This is what I need and are you willing to support me?" And everyone was very in, inclined to do that. So, it was a very successful meeting, uh, but anybody is welcome. Like, if, if we wanted to use that, it's a great audience. For example, when people, uh, Taylor, for example, and Cesar Blanco came and talked about their program. And so, I had them as one of the speakers. So, whatever it is that you want to talk to everyone at one time, it's a, it's a natural audience already. They're engaged or highly motivated. So, um, uh, I think that would be one, one place to, that anybody that wanted to utilize that audience for whatever it is, from, you know, uh, each one of the lanes of each one of the commissioners, like Commissioner Stout on healthy food. And then what, what does each one, how can they contribute that? And we also talked about them feeling a little bit of obligation to support things, uh, money-wise. I mean, even if it's very small budget kind of things, but, you know, what can you do to be able to contribute to the big picture? So, I think we have a good audience there. Uh, and, and it's been, like I said, it started almost five years ago and we've had mayors come in and out. But it was so much nicer to see like, um, uh, Perea from Sunland Park. And then he said he would host, uh, he is there and then would give a tour. He wants to do a tour of, spend an hour or two giving a tour of, of Sunland so people know the dynamics. Also, you know, some of the things coming up at Santa Teresa, like the data center that they're gonna, uh, Jupiter that they're working with so that we don't be blind to, to what they're doing. So, uh, anybody's welcome to use that, that forum, uh, for anything that, that we're talking about today. Because I think they're, they're our natural partners. Uh, I think they're our natural partners that, that we could work with, real closely with.
So, uh, for this particular event, I'm thinking then, what I'm hearing from the court is, um, this, for this one, we would start with a large, like a, a really large meeting. And when I say large, we would invite, it'd be all-inclusive. And as far as the cities, the school districts, surrounding counties, um, ESDs, MUDs. Uh, what about utilities? All, I heard Lower Valley Water District, Irrigation District, but what about, um, our city utilities?
El Paso Water and, and El Paso Electric, absolutely.
They're the natural partners to...
And then, um, the, we, and we would convene it. And the outcomes we would start with is just to collaborate, understand and build synergy, right?
You know, Betsy, one of the things I'd learned from being in the Meta project is how little we know about what the water, El Paso Water's doing or what El Paso Electric is doing. And I was sort of surprised that, at how much, uh, things were talking, discussing between Meta and them, that I think it would be very important for us, especially as we're trying to bring companies in, like what are limitations, what are the things that they're doing? Uh, but I was very surprised at the kind of negotiations that were going on that, I, you know, we were not, I think even Borderplex was a little, like, behind understanding this kind of, what is it that, that they could do? For example, this thing about being able to give back almost, and I don't want to use a percentage because it was a little...
Two hundred percent.
Like, I didn't believe that much, but they were gonna give back something like 200% of the water that they use are gonna give it back to the community. I mean, that's a really important thing for us to understand how they're able to do that. Um, I was very impressed with that, but I, I was also not aware that that was the capacity that the El Paso Water had.
So, um, that's definitely something we can put into the, um, like the information that would be shared during the, the sessions, like what are their sources, what are their plans? I'm imagining that, um, we would, we would ask each entity, we would invite each entity and then ask them to become, and we would work with them, but to come prepared to share, like what are your strategies? What are you working on? What are some of your challenges? And just a general overview of who they are, what they do, right? What they're, what they're, um, like with El Paso Water. Uh, John Blue does that presentation to small groups throughout the year. But I imagine he'd give that presentation about, like, our long-term water supply to this group so that everyone's aware.
Are, are we talking about, like, having everybody in the same room? Or just having them, just us meeting with them individually to understand what their strategic plan is or what they're working on or what?
I was thinking you all wanted them all in the same room, but that's up to you all.
And I'm glad, uh, it's a good suggestion, Commissioner, because I've been in, uh, I can tell at least six where they're starting to do that and then it sort of fades, uh, the chamber. Ricardo Mora got us together with several people at the table. Uh, I had one in my office where it was, uh, you know, Heather Wilson, uh, Kelly. And so, it's sort of like little, little sparks here and there. But I think that your idea of us sort of leading that would be very successful.
The only thing is, I'm just trying to imagine what that would look like, you know, having everybody in the same room and then everybody doing a presentation. I mean, there's a lot of entities that we're talking about, right?
Right.
I don't know if it, if it would be easier to have, kind of separate them out into different groups and then, and then meet with them or have them come into Commissioners' Court? Because, um, you know, you also have like quorum issues with all the different, like, city councils and, and I, I just see it very difficult to bring like the whole, like all the city councils together, with the Commissioners' Court together because they probably have to, I don't know if there's...
They'd have to post their meeting.
Where they have to post the meetings or they have to have the meetings within their city limits? Like, we have to have a meeting at a county, a county facility?
You can meet jointly in, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the Open Meetings Act Law says you can meet jointly in the facility of one of the governing bodies, but it just has to be accurately posted. But I'll defer to legal.
Yeah. Ebe Ugas, Rodri Assistant Accounting Attorney, that's correct, Betsy. It just needs to be posted, treated as a regular, um, meeting.
I, I think, um, definitely some structure should be involved. Uh, I, in strategic plannings that I've done before or participated in before, um, it could be useful for us to have kind of, um, intro meeting with a lot of different stakeholders to talk about the county, right? To, to kind of say, "These are the, the, the focus areas that we have. Um, this is our interest in doing a strategic planning process region-wide." Kind of lay the foundation and, um, and give people homework, a survey. Um, uh, maybe you can initially group people into committees or task forces there, um, that would then branch off. We could prescribe some of those or leave it open to the group, um, if we don't want to do that. But if we just, um, have like a free-flowing meeting, it, it won't be productive, I don't think.
I mean, because it's gonna, how long is it gonna be too, right?
Right, that's one of the questions is how long of an event? Because if you allow everybody to, to speak and give their overview, it's going, and, and as many people as we're proposing to invite, it's going to be very lengthy.
Maybe we should do some... One of the strategic planning that we, we asked, um, that, that I encouraged, is why don't we ask the Juarez, the mayor of El Paso and Las Cruces, would they be willing to share their strategic plan? And then we looked, we were supposed to look at it, but it takes so much work from us. But if we looked at them and, and somebody, I think it was Madrigal at this, at that time, that would look at each one of the strategic plans and then look at the touch, touchpoints to say, you know, "This is similar to what we want and this is similar to the independent school districts, what they want." And then from there, that we would begin that kind of a process to say, "These are the touchpoints" and then work with each one of these entities. Uh, but I think there has to be sort of a, an understanding of, of where those touchpoints are. Because like Commissioners are saying, I mean, we could just, pah, get bombarded. But even, even, and they were willing to do that. I just remember she was leaving and, and we didn't, weren't able to do that. But I know that the mayor of Juarez was willing to give us the strategic plan so that we could look at it, um, and just sort of say, "Here's the touchpoints and then we're gonna discuss it at strategic planning." But it just didn't, it didn't happen because of, but that would be one, one point, at least to understand. And I think everybody would be willing and maybe even public information as to what, what their plans are. And then someone, I hate that we put it on ourselves because I don't know anybody else that would be willing to really sit down and look at all the strategic plans and say, "These are the really important touchpoints that we have with each one." And then the common strategic, uh, touchpoints with everybody else.
And some of our smaller municipalities we've met with, and some of them don't have, um, as, I mean, they have limited resources, just to be really like, a, a, and when we met with them, it was really stark, limited resources. So, they don't have someone putting together a, a strategic plan document. They don't have, you know, I mean, they're, they're getting by with just what they have to, the services they have to do.
Proud as to how ours is compared to, because I mean, we, we should be very proud of everything we do in our strategic planning because I don't see that, to that degree, I haven't seen it in any other organization.
I, I'm very proud too. I think we, we really have a impactful strategic plan. But I, I do think, but they, that doesn't mean that they don't have goals and priorities. It just may not be organized the same way we organize, right? Um, and again, it has to do with very limited resources. Um, so, I do think, I do think if the court wanted to do it in smaller, like, segments of, of meetings or smaller groups or, um, individually...
Like utilities, maybe one?
Like utilities or, or something like that. Um, I do think there's, there is value in somehow being able to share that information or live-stream it and encourage others to watch and, you know, that we're gonna be doing this as a series. We'd invite you to watch the series, something like that. Because I do think the information that would be shared is vital to all of the participants. So, that's, that's just something, or that we, you know, I, I imagine we would record these meetings and then make them available, you know, as a, a part of this process with others to get the full value out of it.
Is this, is this something that, that, that our staff has the capacity to, to convene? Or is, do we need to talk about, like, looking for maybe a grant to hire a consultant? That, like, an expert in these types of things?
I think it would definitely be a, I mean, a consultant who, who does this would be excellent to have. If, if we do it as staff, it's going to take us a little bit of time. And we're not going to be probably at the facilitation level that, and a consultant who does this all the time will be at.
Judge.
I, I think it's a, I mean, I hate to say this, but I feel very proud about this. But I really believe that following Commissioners Stout is, if we don't do it, I don't think anybody else is. I, I cannot imagine, I haven't heard that kind of discussions with anybody. So, I think it's gonna be us, but then it's gonna take the resources that, that you would have to explain that. So, Commissioner Codonado?
You know, and I think maybe along those lines, maybe we ought to do some prep work and send out, uh, a letter with some questions for all those entities out there. Look, we are thinking about doing this countywide. Uh, what are the issues that you all foresee in your, you know, uh, that you all have identified as priorities for you within your strategic plan, if you have one? And if not, what are your priorities for your entity? Uh, and are you willing to participate with us? And then, then we can decide, once we get those back, how we maybe tackle the meetings instead, so we can have some prep work actually done beforehand. And say, "Look, this is what we're gonna focus for these meetings." we're going to focus for these meetings, and those that are interested, you know, show up, this is what we're going to be tackling at this particular meeting, and that would be one, because if we do one meeting with everybody, it's, I guess, that's going to be mega time. And I, I just think that's the way we ought to approach it, is send out letters to all of them, and request--
That wouldn't be that difficult to ask everyone, what are your, your priorities, and at least we begin to look at--
Yeah.
--a base of information, and then we move from--
I think that's also kind of like along Commissioner Butler's idea of surveying, and I do think a survey, if we, if we surveyed, it helps us collect the data in an organized way, so we could send a letter with those kinds of questions, basically surveying, what are your priorities, even asking them to kind of rank, what is your top priority, what is your, your, some of your most important issues in your organization?
Yeah, and I think biggest challenges, right? So, so when I think about a countywide strategic plan, it's, it's, one, how do we tackle common issues, but also, like, what are our, what are our generational goals for our region? You know, call it the big hairy audacious goal, what are, what's the next big thing that we're working towards as a community, and do we have consensus over one or multiple items? If there's not consensus, can we get to a consensus? I think that's probably what we need most right now.
But you make a good point, are we even sure, we had that discussion on priorities ourselves, because that would be very important, that we need, these are our priorities, and we're interested in knowing yours, but I think we have to start, and, and the time constraint and the resources, that's the only thing I, I'm worried, I would put that on, on you, Betsy, to say, i- is this, we've got so many other challenges, we've got the bond challenges, we've got the budget challenges, we've got, you know, how do we want to use our resources at this time? Do we want to take care of in-house what we need to do before we decide we're trying to help the rest of the, the county? But I think it's maybe something your department can sort of put it in perspective, like, what, what resources would you have? Because I remember we, we worked on the Malcolm Baldridge, and boy, that took a lot of resources, and then we tried to work with UMC on that, and with the city on that, and it took a lot of effort, a lot of energy, too.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of meshing the two together here, in, in this part of the conversation, but I, I think the first, the first item is, you know, just convening and understanding what, what other people's, or what other entities strategic plan is, sharing ours, and then kind of identifying areas where we have synergy. And then the second one is kind of what, what Commissioner Butler was just alluding to, like, the audacious goals, and, and bringing in the whole community, like, neighborhood associations, and, and not just governmental entities, right? Like, just a, a large swath of, of different, different individuals from, from the community, people, anybody who may want to participate, and, and just modeling that off of what, what happened, you know, 20, 30 years ago, that brought about saving the Fort Bliss missions, and, and the MCA, and the, and the medical, the, the health, the Health Sciences Center.
So I think, I definitely think with 5.2, that is, that, like, what, the way it's written to me, 5.2 is as you described, Commissioner, it's being aware, just knowing what each other's priorities are, and if you don't have a plan, it's okay, but what are your priorities, what are your challenges, just kind of that basic level of information, and us sharing ours. And then that helps us prepare for the 5.9. Knowing those things will help us get even further ready for the 5.9 goal. If we do the 5.2 in smaller segments, we could do special meetings, and, and pull in, and we would, we would manage, knowing that some would be larger than others, like, some would take, some would have more information and take longer, and so we'd have to break them down into segments over several months, you know, of, like, okay, this month, we're going to do three municipalities, because they're smaller, or something like that. When we, when we met with the municipalities, and we met with all of the smaller municipalities, I think except for one, I think one or two maybe did not make it, but we did it over about a two- or three-hour period, and, and I thought we got a lot of information out of it, and we shared, this was at a staff level, we shared our strategic plan and goals, and then they shared their, their strategic plans, and their, and their major projects that they were working on. And, and it, that took us about three hours, for just the, probably four, probably four or five municipalities.
Betsy, from, from this discussion, would you be able to step back and sort of give us some, some ideas, because I think you've gotten some information, and then come back and say, I think these are some of the things that--
Yes.
--that we might be able to, to accomplish, and, and also your resources, your availability of resources to, to accomplish that?
We could definitely do that under the 5.2 one, come back and bring you all a, a proposed approach, and what it would take.
I, I have a question, and just in terms of, of format, would we be able to do a roundtable, similar to how we do our strategic planning? So this environment isn't really conducive to--
Yes, ma'am, we would definitely, we would definitely recommend it be done as a special work session, it would still have to be in one of our facilities, but that could be anywhere from the Coliseum to the Pavilion, we would have to work with our AV team, too, because I do imagine we want to memorialize these as much as possible, and, and make the public be able to be very aware of these, and so, but we could definitely do it in a county facility, that's more conducive to that type of environment of a work session.
Yeah, and if we are able to, maybe, I don't know which one, if it's 5.2 or 5.9, but if we are able to designate different committees or task forces, then we could split up, so that we don't have to have a quorum when we meet with those.
Correct, yes, ma'am. So I think that, that really helps us with the 5.2. On the 5.9, this one, the, the discussion, I do think is a little bit different, because I don't know if we are the conveners. I wanted to, to put that out there, to see, are we the conveners of the 5.9? Or Commissioner, as you mentioned, the last time it was done through senators, you know, I don't know if it's through the Council of Governments, I don't know if you all are thinking, like, who do we, who do we work with to try to convene this broader, community-wide, regional even?
Yeah, I mean--
Vision.
Right, I mean, I think, I don't know if we, if we, if we can be, I think that we should play a strong role in, in trying to be the conveners, but the last time that there was any, like, meaningful discussion about this was right before COVID, and I had, and I, I had a meeting with Senator Shapley, and I know that Congresswoman Escobar was interested in trying to help facilitate something like this, so we may want to engage her, and ask if that's something that she's, she's still willing to, you know, look at, trying to take the lead on, but, but I think, and, 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 you know, I think we should definitely try to reach out to Shapley, and to Senator Rodriguez, and also to Ray Calleiro, to ask them kind of how they, how they got it, got it put together last time, and, so we're not, like, reinventing the wheel, and, and we can, we can--
And it's a great point, because I've been in, so, Betsy and I have been in so many meetings where Congresswoman Escobar convenes, and I'm very impressed with the number of people that show up, and it's more up here, instead of us being the one that, and then we could support her, she's got, I think she has the staff that would, would allow that, but I'm, I'm very impressed, every time we've had a meeting, I'm like, I don't know if I could, we could convene as many people as she does, and it's sort of a little overarching kind of thing, county and state, and, so I think that's a great idea.
I just want to make sure it moves forward, and, and I know that, you know, last time when we were talking about it, we were having discussions with, with a lot of the local developers and businessmen as well, to help fund the project. I know that we had conversations with, with people like Woody Hunt, and Paul Foster, and Rick Francis, and others, that, that I think may have been involved with, with the first round, or the last time they did it, so I think that's where we need to, where we need to start, and, and then we can figure out what, what role we can play, if we need to, if we need to take more of a, a, a larger role in convening, just, I just want to make sure that it moves forward, right, that, that we actually get this done, because I feel like we haven't done this in a while, and we need to have strategic goals as a community, and, and involve the community more, and, you know, have that participatory and that co-governance model taking place with all, with all levels of, of, of government here, so, you know, whatever, let's engage the delegation, let's engage the Congresswoman, and ask them, you know, if they would like to move forward with this, and, and play a, play a role as conveners, or do we need to step up and do it?
Okay, okay, let us look into that, and we'll circle back with you all on what we're able to find out.
Okay, well, thank you, Betsy.
Any other thoughts or feedback before we wrap this up?
Thank you, Betsy.
You all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo, thank you, Ramon.
Okay, this brings us to item five, executive session. Commissioners' Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items 5A through 5C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners' Court will recommence to take official action. It is 10:22 a.m.
Right before COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's good enjoyment, good relaxation, good therapy coming out here and coping with situations and relaxation. It's peaceful, it's quiet, it's nice.
In the summertime, it's nice and cool down here. About 8 o'clock starts getting warm, but it's nice and cool to come down here and relax for a couple of hours before you have to go out here and face the world.
The bait, it varies. You know, when I first started out here, they were hitting on chicken breast. They stopped hitting on chicken breast. What's very popular is weenie hot dog. And then they stopped hitting on the hot dog. And then all of a sudden, they start hitting on the shrimp. And then it slows down on the shrimp. Now I'm using some stink bait, and it really stinks. So hopefully, we can catch something with some stink bait.
But it's great when the fish are biting, it's great. Yeah. The trout will put the hook in their mouth. And what you're supposed to do when they pull on it like they pulled before, then you yank on the line and get the hook set in their mouth. And you gotta... Trout, it is kinda hard fishing for trout. Like that. There he goes.
Well, the largest one I caught here was a 15-pounder. Yeah, you can eat them. I don't because I like to catch and release.
I would, if I was gonna eat fish, I'd eat the fish. And I've been fishing here for 60 years. And you live to fight another day.
Quisimos iniciar con uno de los tesoros más grandes del Paso. Y es que el Parque Azcarrate, muchas personas lo toman por sentado. Entre sus inmensas áreas verdes, decenas de actividades y rincones que no te acabas en un solo día, esta manera perfecta de arrancar esta aventura.
Más de 400 sacres de pura diversión, el parque más grande del condado de El Paso y lo mejor, en verano abre de 5:30 a.m. a 11:00 p.m., sin pretextos.
Que empiece el verano.
Esta alberca olímpica de 50 metros tiene área de clavados, chapoteaderos, toboganes y voleibol. Abre desde este 14 de junio, lunes a jueves, de 12:30 a 14:30 p.m. y fines de semana de 12 a 15. También ofrecen clases de natación con horarios flexibles.
Para que no importa la edad que tengan, todos tengan oportunidad de aprender a nadar con compañeros pues de su nivel y de su edad.
Padres de familia, créanme cuando les digo que una clase de natación agotará la energía de sus peques.
Para que salgan muy cansados y ya no delatan. O que salgan y ya coman y se vayan a dormir.
El toque especial es llevarlos después por...
Pisa.
Y eso será suficiente. No obstante, el agua es para todos. La cantidad de beneficios tanto físicos como mentales es enorme.
El movimiento del agua, el sonido del agua es relajante para empezar. La transparencia, el color, la textura... Bueno, el agua, ¿qué les puedo decir?, es nuestro ambiente.
Este verano puedes vivir la fantasía de Michael Phelps o bien de la cinta.
Y si después de nadar aún te quedan energías, ¿qué tal un paseo en bici? Trae la tuya o renta una hídrida por $6 al día. Va rápido y no juzga si te cansas a la mitad.
Con estas bicis nunca se te va a escapar el carrito de las nieves.
No hay susto que una raspa no aliviane. Mickey's Ice Cream viene todas las tardes y encontrarlo es pan comido.
Este la gente escucha la música y nos busca.
Y bueno, al menos constatamos que los frenos sí funcionan.
Y si creías que ya lo habías visto todo, agárrate porque en Azcarrate también hay canchas para practicar cualquier deporte que se te ocurra.
Aquí el que no quiere hacer nada simplemente no sale, pero aquí hay muchas partes donde divertirse.
¿Quieres sentirte como un magnate sin pagar un country club? El gran campo de golf de Azcarrate es tu lugar. 27 hoyos y clases para todos los niveles. Si pensabas que en el lago de Azcarrate había puro camarón de sopa instantánea, estás muy equivocado.
Puedes encontrar desde Catfish, Carpa, La Paz, La Lobina.
Consigue tu licencia y ven a probar tu suerte si lo tuyo es relajarte con una caña.
Para mí, la joya de la corona del Parque Azcarrate es este inmenso lago donde puedes pescar y por supuesto disfrutar de un amarillo y dorado atardecer.
Que quede claro, las mejores aventuras están más cerca de lo que pensamos. Nos vemos en la próxima parada. Yo soy Miguel Contreras de Noticias 26, el reportero favorito de tu reportero favorito.